Evening, everyone. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America. Public for which it stands. John.
Thank you. Good to see everyone here on a brisk night. Alrighty. Our first order of business is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion for -- to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted. Going a little bit out of order because of the swearing-in portion and waiting for the person who will swear everyone in, so we're gonna bump up the good news report 'cause it's so fun to hear it anyway, so let's hear it first. You're always quick on the uptake, so...
I know, I know. So, here's the good news report for the month of December. It is a little early, so I apologize, we haven't captured all of the work that our students are doing out in the community, but I'll mention a few of those items. But first of all, if you do go to Portland International Raceway for the light display this year, you will see a painting project with a sign that reads "Holiday Wishes," and that was created by Pioneer Elementary students in Victoria McHugh's 4th grade class. So, if you are out there, look for that sign, picture of it at the top of the good news. The Evergreen High School math team placed 11th in a national math contest recently. The team scramble competition had over 45 of Evergreen students participating, grades 9 through 12, and they had to finish 100 questions in 30 minutes, and they again scored and placed 11th in the national competition. Luis Reyes Essencio attended a Nike shoe design contest this past summer, and he's now been invited back to do a job shadow. He is Heritage High School's DECA president, and he is hoping to get an internship after his job shadow. For the past 10 years, Washington Grange #82 has been supplying York Elementary School with dictionaries under the National Words for Thirds program. They've purchased enough each year, so that each York 3rd grade student is able to have their very own dictionary. Silver Star Elementary School recently was the recipient of a $2,500 check from IQ Credit Union in their IQ Credit Union for Kids program. The money will bring in Teach One to Lead One this school year, and the community mentoring program will provide 11 trained volunteers to the school to mentor 87 students. Now, we'll get into the service to others. If you haven't been at any of the area Fred Meyers, if you have, there's been students off and on manning the kettles there, and we'll have photos coming up in the January good news, so watch and give generously when you're at Fred Meyer. But, this past month, Mandy's Pantry at Mountain View led a school drive that garnered over 14,000 pounds of food, enough to make 182 meals for families in need. Meanwhile, at Frontier, 20 families enjoyed a traditional Thanksgiving meal, thanks to the staff at Frontier. The Equity and Access Leadership Team comprised of Frontier teachers organized the food drive. The Cascadia Lions coordinated the Share Thanksgiving Food Drive at Cascadia Tech Academy, and that was sponsored by two of the first-year criminal justice students. They put together 18 boxes for families in need. Cascade Middle School's National Junior Honor Society collected 552 pounds of food and donated it to the Clark County Food Bank. That's 50 pounds more this year than last year. Columbia Valley Elementary held a food drive. They collected enough food to feed 113 families at Thanksgiving. And finally, Harmony Elementary students participated in a Thanksgiving food drive, and in addition to collecting food for Harmony families in need, they had enough food left over to donate to Share House as well. And ABM employee Roger Neal received the Chehalis Middle School Ora of Honor this month. The oar is given to staff members who go above and beyond to provide a high level of service to the Chehalis team, and you see him pictured with the Chehalis team as well as some of the ABM representatives. And that is your good news for the month of December.
We'll go ahead now and have the superintendent's report.
As I'm sure the board has noticed, our Communications and Community Relations Department has been producing a series of videos to provide information on the upcoming bond measure. They did a district overview, they've done each of the five elementaries to be replaced, Wyest Middle School, and this week they should be finishing up Legacy High School, Mountain View High School, and Heritage High School videos. It's kind of exciting to watch those, as those are all narrated by students, and we even have student interns that are helping with the production of the videos as well. We've been using the main video as well as information presentation, getting out to staff, to make sure everybody knows the facts and is properly informed, so that we can share accurate information with the public as they ask questions on the upcoming bond. One thing we did of note last month in November that we didn't cover, I think I mentioned that we were going to be doing it, is at the school directors' conference, board members, myself, and staff members presented at the Equity Pre-Conference, and we were the one school district that spoke to the probably 65, 70 attendees at the pre-conference for Equity for school directors, and shared with how much of the work that we've been doing, the foundational structures that we've put in place, and the work that we're planning to do towards creating an equitable environment for all students in the school district. So, pretty proud of the fact that we were selected to be able to do that. Kind of on the heels of that, at our last board meeting, we were approached by a representative from Black Lives Matter about Black History Month. Just reporting to the board that I did meet with her, with Cecilia. Had a very productive meeting, and in our discussions, her plan is to provide us with some prompts that teachers can use during community circles that we've been initiating over the last two years, and we've actually had teachers saying it would be good to have some prompts on questions to have students discussing. So, she'll be presenting us with some of those questions that can be used in community circles during the month of February, as well as a series of short bios that we can provide to the schools, that they can highlight significant African-Americans in American history, and just as a 20, 30-second bio along with the morning announcements. Last week, or I guess it was two weeks ago, we had Leadership Clark County did their Education Day. Evergreen was well represented and shared the reality of public education with the LCC class, and feedback that we got was, they felt it was very informative. A lot of people learned things they had no idea about public education. And I think the last thing that I want to cover is that tomorrow at the ESD at 10:30 to 12:30, we're hosting our annual legislative forum, and the last I heard, we had 11 legislators were scheduled to be in attendance, and it's an opportunity for superintendents throughout ESD 112, which is much bigger than Clark County, which is why we have that many legislators. But it gives the superintendents an opportunity to share our legislative platforms and positions, and what we are hoping that they can achieve for our students in the upcoming legislative session. So, I think that's all I've got for my superintendent's report.
Okay. Next up, we have something that I am excited about, the administration of oath of office for our newly elected and re-elected directors. And so, I am very excited that we have Clark County Auditor Greg Kimsey here to administer the oath of office to Jenny Gronwald and Julie Boconegra.
Honors here, we're so excited.
Woohoo! We're always happy to see you here.
Does the microphone work?
If we could use the microphone, we video-record, and that way people can hear.
Come over where the camera can pick you up.
There you go.
So, many of you are District 5, and Julie, you are District 9. So, just raise your right hand and repeat after me. This is gonna be a little bit tricky, am I gonna do this here? Here we are, still. So, repeat after me, but after I say "aye," you'll say your name. So, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and of the state of Washington that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington and will, to the best of my judgment skill and ability truly, faithfully, diligently and impartially perform the duties of the office of
Perform the duties of the office of
Very good. Evergreen School District #114 school director, District # in and for Clark County, Washington as such duties are prescribed by law. Well done, congratulations.
Greg will make it official with the autographs and... Well, I just am excited to have Jenny join our group and Julie to stay with our board. Both have been very dedicated to the children of our district, and our work will be able to continue forward with the board that does well, will do well together, so I'm very, very pleased with what the voters decided.
Oh, that hook is pretty tough.
Thank you, Greg. Right then, we're now five again, which is nice. Our next... Glad you were all here. It's alright, we're here about kids, so we like them. Okay, our next order of business is board reorganization. This is the time when we make our annual election of board officer roles for our work. And so, the first position that I will open the floor for a nomination is for the role of board president. Do I have a nomination for the board president position?
I nominate Todd Usaria as board president.
Have any other nominations?
Second? Second, the nomination of Todd Usaria.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess I should have asked you if you accept the nomination, but you said "aye."
Okay, I accept the nomination.
Alright, then I'm gonna hand the gavel off to you and let you take over. Congratulations, Todd.
Thank you. I really want to thank Victoria for doing such an able, awesome job as president this last year, as well as many multiple years in previous years as president of the board. So, I hope I can only live up to your high standards that you've set, but I really want to thank you for all the work that you've done in the last year and many other years.
Thank you, Todd. You're gonna be awesome.
Definitely agree, because Victoria has been a definite role model in the position for those of us that have done president before, and Todd, you've done it before too, so I think we're fully confident with you.
I share that confidence, and thank you so much, Victoria, for the things that... Well, Victoria was my mentor when I started out. I picked her. I just said, "Get over here and answer my questions," basically, but just knowing how to use the process, as I know we've discussed back and forth. Always keep that focus on kids, no matter what is something that you helped reinforce. You know, I can, we can say, "We're here for the kids," but we can't forget it, not even when we get into the details, and you've been amazing at maintaining that focus on the kids for me. You're in charge now.
So, I guess we'll go forward with the reorganization of board officers. The next position is for vice president of the school board, and so I'll now open it for nominations.
I nominate Rob Perkins as vice president.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Rob, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Okay, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Rob. And next, we have the position of Legislative Representative for the school board. I'll open that up for nominations.
I'd like to move that for Julie Boconegra to be our legislative representative.
Have a second?
I second.
Julie, do you accept the nomination?
I do accept the nomination. I'm excited to, for this one.
Great. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor for Julie Boconegra to become the Legislative Representative for the board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Julie.
Thanks, Todd.
And then, besides these positions that we vote on, we have other roles within the board, and so I guess we can talk about those as well. We had talked about liaison to the Evergreen School District Foundation, and any discussion about that?
I would like to recommend that Jenny take that position. She's worked with the foundation a lot, and has some things that she's still kind of engaged with on that, understanding that the role is a little different when you're a board member, you're there as a liaison more than a true member of the board, and so I think she's a good candidate for that position.
Sound good, Jenny?
Yep, I'll accept the recommendation and be the liaison to the Evergreen School District Foundation.
I say that I won't miss, 'cause I got to do it for the last year and was quite enjoying my time hanging out, so I might show up once in a while and hang out.
I'm ready for the events.
Me or her, both. Yeah.
That sounds good. I guess another role, very important role, especially as we want to improve our communications, especially with the community, is our Communications Linkage Committee, and we've had two board members on that committee, and I believe we have some recommendations or thoughts about who should be on that committee.
Yes, I'd like us to ask Victoria Bradford to serve on that committee.
She is very strong in communications, and she has a passion, so yeah, I think she'd be great. Any other comments?
I would agree with that completely.
I would love it.
Great, and... Anything on Julie?
I have been on that committee the last, what, five months that we started it, and yeah, I would like to be.
Yeah, that sounds great. Any other comments? Okay, and then, a big initiative of ours is the Equity Initiative, and we've had a board representative on that as well. Victoria, you've been serving in that role, right? Any comments about continuing?
I, yeah, I'm happy to continue in that role. It's a great team, with representatives from elementary, middle, high, and administration, and that's work that is critical to what we're, our future plans for our students, so I'm more than happy to stay the course on that.
Comments? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Victoria. We also have the Federal Relations Network, and do we have any thoughts on that?
Right now, I'm scheduled to go to the Washington DC, but as you know, I've had some medical things that I'm dealing with, so I'll know more in about a week whether or not I can still go or not. And I know Rob has talked about filling in if I can't go.
Yeah, that'd be good. I mean, we could be somewhat flexible, I think, in that position, right?
That committee, does it just meet that one week?
There's...
Are there other obligations?
There can be as many obligations as you want to take on, it seems, but NSPA puts on their Equity Conference on the, is it the Saturday? Then they have the conference on the Sunday and the Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like end of January, right?
Then Monday is that day on the Hill, and it's coming this year at the end of January, that's right. Yeah? Really...
So, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I said that I would be flexible enough to, that I could be flexible enough to take her place if she couldn't go, but hearing that you can is gonna enable me to meet an obligation I thought I couldn't and had an excuse for, but...
Yeah, I'll know more, we'll talk. Okay, thank you.
And I also know, Rob, you'll be busy, 'cause you got elected at the state level, right? With WADA, on the Legislative Committee.
Mavis Nichols, how shall we put this? In Director Area 6, it always seems like it's a silent room when the nominations for Leg Committee come up, but they asked me to finish out Jaren Barney's term, at least, on that committee at the state level, so I'll be...
About one year, two years?
It's the one-year term, so I'll be doing the role of Legislative Committee member at the same conference that our Leg Rep will go for, serving you and the other directors from the area, in coordinating meetings with the legislators, and making sure that our message gets out, as well as, you know, keeping the legislators' feet to the fire, if you will, about our issues.
Great that we have representation from Evergreen on that group again, or in WADA, so...
It'll be kind of nice that we have two board members that'll be up there, meeting with legislators.
Well, that's right, with Rob on the Leg Committee and Julie as a Leg Rep.
Rob going and then Julie, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll be able to keep our eyes on them closer, so...
Who are you talking about, eyes on who? Oh, the legislators. I thought you meant Rob and Julie.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Aren't rumors.
Okay, great, yeah, that'd be good.
I think there's an increasing level of alignment for our priorities and the priorities of all the other larger districts in the state. I guess there used to be an impression that Puget Sound's needs were different than ours, and I don't see that as relevant or prevalent, wrong word, prevalent, as we used to perceive it, so I think there's gonna be a lot of power in our message this year.
Sounds good. Any other discussions then about roles that we have for this next year for the board? I think that pretty much covers it, right? So, okay, great. Well, thank you very much for going through that. Next on the agenda is the monitoring of district operations, and first item in this area is the Operation Expectations OE4, which is Personnel Administration, and the members of the board have received the superintendent's reasonable interpretation and indicators, and now it is the board's job to determine if this meets with the board's expectations. So, to start off with that, I call upon Superintendent John Stich, who authored the report. John?
So, the board adopted the Operational Expectations policies back in August. We've worked through the interpretation of OE4, which is Personnel Administration, and the overall policy states that the superintendent shall assure the recruitment, employment, development, evaluation, and compensation of district employees in a manner necessary to enable the district to achieve its results policies. At the last meeting, I went through in fine detail all of the indicators that we are agreeing to provide to the board annually for monitoring compliance to this report. There's 12 subsections, and each subsection has anywhere from two to, I think there was seven indicators on one of these reports. So, we will be providing that information to the board about a year from now in a monitoring report, now that we've agreed to what those indicators and interpretations are. So, since I covered it in detail in the last meeting, I haven't received any comments or feedback since that meeting at this time. Rather than going through it all over again, I would ask that at this time, the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for Operations Expectations OE4 as presented for second reading and approval.
John? And at this time, I'd like to call upon the audience, if anyone has any comments or questions about this report. And we had quite a bit of conversation at the last board meeting, right?
Yeah.
And we got some really good feedback at the meeting. Okay, so I guess at this time, I'll call for a motion.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's reasonable interpretation indicators for Operational Expectations OE4 Personnel Administration presented for second reading and approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We're now open to ask, to the board, to ask questions or comments about this report. Ebeni?
Are there any substantive changes from the first reading to now?
No changes at all.
And I just really appreciate the work that you and staff have done on this policy. It's really important that we are very clear in our expectations about what we believe staff and our expectations, and want for them in good working conditions and things like that. So, I appreciate, I'm sure Jenny has her little fingers all over this one, so thank you very much for your work on that.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll now take a vote to approve OE4 Personnel Administration as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so OE4, the Operational Expectations for Personnel Administration, the reasonable interpretation and the indicators has been approved. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is in the same area, and it also has to do with Operational Expectations Personnel Administration. We have been presented with a revision, a slight revision, to this policy by Superintendent Stich, so I call upon Superintendent to discuss this revision.
So, when we were talking about the interpretation of OE4 in workshop, under the hiring practices of the district, the board identified a change they wanted to make to the original policy that they had just adopted, and it dealt with trying to ensure that our staff and workforce within the district more closely matched the racial and cultural breakdown of our students to provide positive role models that our students could identify with. So, we wrote specific language for Bullet 3 in this policy that would state that... that would state that the superintendent will select highly qualified and the best suited candidates for all positions and take proactive measures towards recruiting diverse candidate pools more closely matched to our student population. And we're kind of getting the cart before the horse because you've already approved the indicators and the interpretation. But we had already worked this language into the interpretation and come up with reasonable indicators for this. And it was written from the standpoint that, understanding our local community and the areas we pull from, typically for especially our teaching staff, it could be difficult overall and even in the long term to have our work, our teaching staff directly match our student population. But it puts an onus on me as a superintendent to proactively take measures and report those measures back to the board on an annual basis. So when we look at which career fairs we're gonna go to, where we're gonna specifically target different minority demographic groups for teachers, that's the type of information we'll be providing back as well as hopefully some success in increasing the diversity of our workforce. So the the policy is now presented to you to incorporate the changes you asked for that align with what you just approved. So based on that, at this time, I recommend the board accepts the revision to Board Policy OE4, Personnel Management is presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and adoption.
Thanks, John. Um, do we have any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, given none, I'll uh, I'll call for a motion.
I move that the board accept the revision to OE4 Personal Administration as presented for a first reading and forward it for a second reading and adoption.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we are open for board comments and questions. Do we have any?
Gonna be pleased?
I think it makes sense to add that line in the policy of.
Again, we're talking about not a, not being accountable for a specific, I guess, demographic of of the staff makeup. But we're talking about proactively recruiting to become more diversified, right?
And part of that report in identifying how we're being proactive, we'll have to do an analysis of how our current staff either matches or doesn't match our student population and then what subgroups we're actually targeting to try to create that better match. So you'll get that information along with it and you'll be able to track over time whether we make progress. It's just as the superintendent, my accountability is really making a concerted effort and working to try to achieve it rather than having a a yes or no whether or not we're there on whether we're in compliance in this area.
It's a, it's a difficult thing to measure in the first place, right? I think when we were talking with the teachers a couple of weeks ago, um, some of this came up in some of our conversations about, not necessarily this, but that some of these softer measures are are hard, really hard to attach numbers to. And I heard a lot of talk about those taking the form of, well, here's recruitment efforts or training efforts or that kind of thing. I just want to read it again, though. It says, "Take proactive measures toward recruiting diverse candidate pools more closely matched to our certain student population," which is worded in my hope not to uh, create any fear that we're going to let a teacher go in favor of a different teacher. That's governed by contract. And I certainly hope it, I, my, my hope is that we can clear that air out of there. Make sure nobody, nobody is scared that they'll lose their job over this.
Right, because that's certainly not the intent, right?
No, that's not the intent, but um.
Have we had people concerned about that?
I'm anxious about it myself just because of uh, the way that some subgroups have responded to affirmative action measures and uh, other things related to that. They'll reach back into that history and wonder whether or not that's the direction we're taking. And I want to affirm that that's not the direction we're taking.
And and the policy does say, "Select highly qualified and the best suited candidates for all positions." So it's, it's the effort on, my effort is to create a diverse pool of candidates and then select the most qualified candidate from that pool. But the the work that we need to do is making sure that our candidate pools are diverse.
Any other comments or questions? So we'll now take a vote to accept the revision of OE4 as a first reading as presented in an effort then to bring it forward for a second reading. Uh, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this revision to OE4 has been approved for a first reading and we'll bring it forward as a second reading for adoption at our next board meeting, which is on January 9th. Okay, thanks, John. Uh, next on the agenda, the Board Consent Agenda. Do we have any comments or questions about this? I guess I have the lone comment. Due to a remote interest in Microsoft stock, I will have to recuse myself from Council Payable Warrant Vouchers number 339796 and 339572. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
I move for adoption of the Board Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the Board Consent, Board Consent Agenda has been adopted. Next is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Do we have any comments or questions? Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the Superintendent's Consent Agenda has been approved. Now time for board comments. Do we have any board comments?
Should I go first?
Yes, please.
I'm aware that devices continue to be deployed because my son came home with his today. But I, I wanted to make the comment that in the process of that, another Pacific parent called me asking for tech support on how to sign the forms. I was really amused to have someone reach out, uh, reach out to me in that manner because I actually knew how and I was able to help her.
Way to go.
Yeah, what?
Way to go.
Yeah, it's a, it's pretty simple once you get into Skyward to just check the boxes, so.
I have heard that feedback, too.
Yeah, uh, I just got her that far and then she was very grateful for that.
Better than to call me for that kind of a question.
Well, if you had had kids in school, you would have seen the simplicity of it and um, whoever it is that set that up in Skyward, thank you for that because I think it's streamlining a lot of stuff and I'm excited to see more of that. I was at the Lower Columbia River Music Association's Honors Band and Orchestra Performance this week. And I want to make mention of the beauty of that performance and the talent. Most of the kids who tried out and were accepted for this uh, for this honor came from Union and Mountain View, a few from Heritage, one or two from VSAA, which was kind of surprising considering their focus. But they created a performance with some guest conductors that I'll probably never forget. At one point, the band, the second band that performed was swinging pool noodles in the air to make a noise that was actually part of a written piece of music, modern music, uh, telling the story of angels in the architecture. You just don't forget stuff like that and our kids have this opportunity. That I really, when it comes around next year, I really encourage you to attend this concert and have a look at what happens there. Costs a little bit of money, but it's worth it. Let's see. I was also at Pioneer Elementary School with uh, John last week on the rounds. And uh, I was really impressed with a couple of the classrooms that were there and I actually wanna, actually wanna call out a teacher for something that I saw that was really, really impressive, if that's all right. Uh, I, I got permission from Jenny Hayworth, too, before, before saying this. But Sarah Poulson's fourth grade class, when we saw it, they were doing a science exploration activity. And so what I thought I was looking at the whole time was a very good implementation of a workshop model lesson with a solid activity and a classroom full of 24 excited kids, about 24 kids, grouped in groups of four. It looked like a model workshop demonstration, right? And Jenny made mention after we came out of that, that Ms. Poulson had taken and explicitly built the culture of that classroom so that we could not see the three ELL kids. Now, the three special education kids who were interacting with their peers without assistance or the bunch of ELL kids who were speaking English and not asking for help in succeeding at these activities. Each of these tables was self-organizing. They, one of them played rock, paper, scissors to determine the leader and then um, he took control of the resources and passed it out and they got busy. So this entire classroom is busy and you couldn't tell which kids were special needs, which kids were learning English. They were all collaborating and working together. She said that was an intentional uh, effort to implement a program called Accountability Talk in the first six weeks. And I was, in the first six weeks of the, of the school year, and I was just impressed by how easy it looked after, after the work had been done. Jenny's really proud of that teacher. And uh, and I'm proud to affirm the work as an example of the things that we want to see based on our results policies.
Right.
So, thank you for showing me that.
Thanks, Rob. Any other comments from the board?
Guess as the new board member, I'll make a quick comment. Um, I just wanna say thank you. I'm looking forward to working with everybody that's up here and to all of the ones that put me in this seat. Everybody. I've had the pleasure of, at some of the schools last week, I got to read The Ninja Bread Man to kids at Endeavor.
There's a picture of that, right?
There is a picture of that up on our wall. So that was really exciting. So the PTA actually asked me to come and read for them. It was, it was, it was great. I had a little apron and everything on. And then to all of the, the district employees that came to the Leadership Clark County Education Session. Thank you guys very much. I chair that session every year and Rob's actually in the Leadership Clark County class this year. And so uh, Superintendent Stich is part of my committee and it was an amazing, amazing day. And the fact that we can teach our community members more about the education system and why we do what we do. I got a little bit passionate in the very beginning and asked all of them to go in with an open heart and an open mind into all of their little table talks. And I think they all did that and came out with a vast array of knowledge on, on all of our districts. So I was, I was excited for that. So thank you, everybody that was able to be there.
Glad to attend that. It was a big day and a lot of people from Evergreen were involved in teaching about education.
My committee makes up mostly as Evergreen employees with the exception of one that's a Vancouver School District employee and one who's a community member who works for work, she works for work, I believe workforce. So everybody else is Evergreen School District, so. But we're fair. We try to make it level of the speakers that we have and it's just not the Evergreen show.
The table talks had a nice mix of educators from all over the county and. Yeah, it's like a big fire hose. It took me three years to assemble that kind of data about schools. So LCC is a really good resource for the us and the education system.
Any comments?
Did attend a middle school volleyball game recently, um, which just kind of reaffirmed that we have fantastic programs in Evergreen School District for our kids, participation wise. It's just great. Girls participating in sports and being active and um, the people in the, you know, the school building from, you know, down to security and to the building administration. Opportunity to participate.
That's great. Okay, I had a few comments. First, I wanted to welcome Ginny and re-welcome Julie to the board. I really look forward to working with you on the board. So congratulations again on being sworn in. That's, yeah, it always gives me a, uh, chills to, to watch that. So that was, that was really nice.
I was shaking, so I'm not really sure why, but my hand was shaking.
Well, you did a lot better than when I got sworn in, so that's good. I also want to reiterate what John was talking about, the presentation at the WASDA conference where a group from this district got to present on the Equity Initiative. And I was fortunate enough to be in the audience to see Victoria, Julie, Dr. Stich, Carl Smith, Jay Buno give a group presentation about our Equity Initiative. And I think it really surprised a lot of districts out there because there was a lot of positive comments about that, right, afterwards. But I thought the presentation went really well, too. So congratulations on that.
Every element of that presentation was fantastic. And the, the other session, I'm blanking on the name of the doctor who spoke about the research correlating ACEs and poverty. Was eye-opening to me. Lot of details to that, but it was a good session to attend, front to back.
And um, also on November 21st, on Tuesday, um, I really want to thank the Communication Linkage Committee because they set up a session for the board members to be able to have a session with a certificated staff where we were able to get feedback from the teach, many of the teachers on our results policy. And I thought that was a really good discussion. I think we'll definitely be taking their feedback to help shape our, our policy going forward. So that was, you know, really, really deep conversations. So I, that was really good. And then the last thing I had is I'm trying to help the kids get into the holiday spirit. So with the Vancouver Pops Orchestra, I played at a music assembly two weeks ago at Sunset and last week at Harmony, played a ton of holiday music and it was a blast. So, yeah, the holidays are coming up. Any other comments? Okay, so next is Future Agenda Items. Do we have any Future Agenda Items to bring up? None? Okay. Next are Citizens Comments. So this is the portion of the meeting where citizens, well, anyone here can address the board for three minutes. And they can be on topics on anything except for personnel or legal. And I believe we have, Don is in the audience. Don, are you here? So if you could take the podium and when you do so, if you could please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Don Steinke, 4833 Northeast 238 Avenue. I have seven copies of this for you. I'm a retired science teacher, taught every science class and every math class at Fort Vancouver High School. The Evergreen School District has been a leader in energy efficiency and conservation. You could erase those gains if you make the wrong decision regarding your pending bond measure. At one time or another, every country in the world has signed the Paris Climate Agreement. Every country committed to developing a plan to reduce its burning of fossil fuels as much as possible as soon as possible. On the day that Trump announced he would pull us out of the Paris Climate Agreement, the city of Portland and Multnomah County both passed policies that would reduce their use of fossil fuels to zero in all sectors by 2050. What if you invest capital in more fracked gas heating systems? And Vancouver passed a similar policy, you'd be reluctant to junk those systems in the near future. I urge the Evergreen Public Schools to adopt a policy of no new fossil fuel infrastructure. Instead of having fracked gas heat, install all-electric ground source heat pumps for our children's future. It may be already too late to save Texas from global warming. They had three 500-year floods in the last three years. Now they are asking Congress for $61 billion. Now they are asking Congress for $61 billion to prepare for the next flood, and California needs billions to recover from the recurring wildfires influenced by global warming. It may be too late to save the economy of the Olympic Peninsula. Their economy depends on snow not melting in the mountains until late summer. Their glaciers are some of the most studied in the world, and they've been receding for 100 years. The law requires EPA to publish a national climate assessment every few years. Their most recent report was leaked a few weeks ago and says global warming is being caused by humans, and they said there's no other plausible explanation. A carbon tax is inevitable, the price of gas will go up and possibly make your gas heat obsolete before the bond is paid off. I checked with Clark PUD, and they said they could provide enough energy for you to go all-electric. Include ground-source heat pumps in your bond proposal. Conservation is the cheapest form of renewable energy. Conserve to the max and use ground-source heat pumps for the rest. Make conservation part of your culture across all departments. At Fort Vancouver High School, where I taught, one bathroom was locked to keep out the smokers for 20 years with the lights on. You can't reduce your use of fossil fuels if you install more natural gas heating systems. If any of you would like to meet me for coffee, I'm available. My contact information is provided on here. It's time for local elected officials to realize they have a part to play in addressing climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Any other comments from citizens? Okay, so seeing no other comments, we will be going into recess to sign papers, and after recess, we will be having a board workshop in the Large Green Conference Room. We'll be talking about disproportionality training. We will be having discussion about Operational Expectations OE5 on financial planning, OE7 on asset protection. We will be having a discussion on the Results Policy 4, which is citizenship. We will then have a board meeting debrief, a legislative update, and a superintendent's update. So we are now in recess.